Agenda eight thirty-two, six thirty P M, February the eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. No recognitions, Dr. Horton? Go into, we've got several minutes to approve, so do I have a motion to approve the called minutes of January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion passes seven to zero. Again, I need, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January fourteenth? That's a regularly called meeting, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
So moved, in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes seven to zero. Do I have a motion to approve the call minutes of January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And I abstain because it was six to zero to one abstain because I was not here for that meeting. So I have a motion to approve the call minutes of February the fourth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, Action Items, Group One.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item I have for you in Group One is to approve the twenty twenty-five Sick Leave Bank Committee. As required by board policy, the board annually approves a list of nominees to serve on the Sick Leave Bank Committee. Following is a list of nominees. Mike Harris from Warriors Central Office, Sean Die from Jefferson Parkway Elementary, Tony Vincent from Welch Elementary, Holly Perez from Blake Bass Middle, Suzie Bott from the Warriors Operations Center, Angela Tinsley from East Calwita High School, and Allison Hurston from Noonan High School. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval of the twenty twenty-five Sick Link, Sick Leave Bank Committee. You see the names there. Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'll turn it to you for the second item in Group One, which is to consider a resolution to opt out of House Bill five eighty-one or Amendment One.
Okay, do I have a motion to, for the resolution to opt out of House Bill five eighty-one or Amendment One?
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, and I know there is some board discussion, so, Mr. Farmer, I'll start on your end and we'll work our way down for any board discussion on this topic. Mr. Robertson, Ms. Dees?
I do. Just bear with me for a few minutes as I am, I have prepared a statement. As people know, I can get very long-winded, and Dr. Guy is gonna tap me when I go over. Let me start by introducing myself. My name is Amy Dees on this placard, but my maiden name is Amy McCoy Dees. I'm part of the infamous McCoy clan, that hillbilly royalty, as some might say, but from the sounds of these hearings, some of you are related to some Hatfields. Most of you may not get that reference if you're not that, if you're not as old as I am. I'm in my fifties, but some of this McCoy Hatfield stuff we've been seeing, I'm about to address. I was elected to this seat in two thousand nine and took office in two thousand ten. Since then, I've served the students and voters in my district with integrity, with honesty, and with transparency. Let me start, this is important to me. I'm a firm believer in Jesus Christ, and as a woman of faith, it has shocked me by the number of speakers who've stood here and questioned our faith and chastised us using Scripture. My mind is blown. I wasn't aware the Bible is a tool to be used in political battles. My husband of thirty-one years, and I moved to Calwita in nineteen ninety-six, having grown up in neighboring Merryweather County, go Greenville Patriots, Noonan has always been home to us. We are proud property owners here in Calwita County, and two of my adult children, two of my four children are Calwita County homeowners. They bought houses here last year, very proud of that. So when I make my decisions about property taxes, I do so as both a property owner and a mother of property owners. There have been strong opinions regarding House Bill five eighty-one over the last month. We've heard from many of you. I know many of you and see you at school events and in our community, advocating for our students. Regarding Senate Bill five eighty-one, I believe it was designed to divide, conquer, and inflate anger in local communities. It indeed has accomplished its goal. I know many of you came here in good faith, with genuine concerns. I believe you're here to ask for our help. I've appreciated your input, we have taken that into consideration, and we've listened. There's another group, however, that has to be addressed. Many citizens who come here, have come here in good faith, you may not be aware of a history that we have with some of the activists who are also attending these meetings. You've seen them speak here, too. They are typically the ones who have come to speak over and over, and they're usually the angriest. You also see them at county commission and city council meetings. You see them at the State House with the same anger and same political antics. They're the same ones who took outside political action money to run against school board races here in twenty twenty-two and around this state, though none of them had children in our schools, and were driven by a disdain for public government-funded schools. In short, they hate public education. They're the ones who told falsehoods in twenty eighteen about this board concerning turf fields and caused taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars to investigate it, just in order to cause a political scandal. They urged our legislative delegation to vote against raising senior citizen tax exemptions, which we did in twenty twenty. They claim to be for better taxes and good government. They are not. They are political mercenaries. Their actions have proven that they do not care about taxes or the good of the community. Their goal is to definitely defund public education. They specialize in political theater. You may not know that our first interaction with this group was in two thousand and nine. They organized to advocate for a private real estate company from Florida called Red Apple Development, which was requesting to open a private charter school here. It was managed by Charter Schools USA. In two thousand eleven, board members and myself included, we voted against this measure. My gut instincts warned me that allowing public dollars to fund private companies was wrong. But the state overruled our decision. They overruled local boards across the state, including Calwita, and allowed the charter to open. They operated in Cherokee County and in Calwita County from two thousand eleven till twenty twenty-four. Students began to flock back into our public schools as issues began to arise at both schools. In twenty twenty-four, Charter Schools USA had their charter revoked by the State Charter Commission. The Cherokee location was closed by the state, and while Shannoria Charter Academy remains open, it is no longer under the rule of Charter Schools governance. I believe this company is currently being investigated, and I'm sure we're gonna be hearing more about this. Not all charter schools are bad. In fact, there are successful charter schools operating in this state and one year in Calwita. The C E C is an outstanding example of a school system working alongside a charter. I do know that from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-four, tens, perhaps millions of Georgia tax dollars were dumped into this failing real estate company. Public dollars poured into Charter Schools USA with zero accountability supported by the same activists who have shown up here for their latest round of political theater. My examples here will barely scratch the surface of this group's unethical behavior. I should mention the Wilson Ware Report, where a former board member and her associates created a scandal against this board accusing us of fraud. I believe you heard that term repeated this afternoon. The last time this occurred, it cost the school district and tax dollars. There's an agenda, and it is not the welfare of Calwita County students. There's an agenda of political unrest. History proves this group gets loud around election time, there's a governor's race next year. I believe this group of activists will go to any length to see public education fail. You've seen a sample of their behavior in dealing with House Bill five eighty-one. Why school boards are used as political pawns is beyond me. I have no answer for those who pass this option down to us. To the citizens who have come here in good faith, agree or disagree, I have heard you. To those same citizens, I'll add, be aware of the activists and know who they are. Their goals are not your goals, and they will steer you wrong every time because of it. I'd like to say a heartfelt thank you to the five thousand one hundred and forty voters in the last election who put their trust in me to lead this district. I believe in public education. All four of my children attended school here. I believe the majority of my district wants me to advocate for their students, and that's exactly what I'll continue to do. I will stand in the gap for our teachers, our parents, and the twenty-two thousand five hundred students that I represent. Thank you.
I'll go to the other end, Mr. Dubose.
Yes, thank you. Bear with me, I'm actually gonna read a statement here. First, I want to start by expressing my deep gratitude to each and every one of you who have engaged in this conversation, whether by attending tax hearings, reaching out through email, or speaking to me directly. Your voices matter, and I've heard your concerns loud and clear. You've shared your frustrations about rising property taxes. You've expressed your unwavering support for strong schools, not just for today, but for the future of our community. I share those same concerns, and as a member of the school board, I can tell you that the decision before us is not an easy one. With Amendment One, there are no winners. We opt in, we risk limiting the future ability of our school boards to properly fund our schools. This means fewer resources, fewer opportunities, and a direct impact on the quality of education for our children. If we opt out, we could see property taxes continue to rise, placing an even greater financial burden on homeowners and families in our community. Nobody wants to be taxed out of their home, and we must find a way to strike a balance. But here's the problem. This amendment does not provide that balance. It forces school systems across the state into an impossible position, one where no real solutions exist, only difficult trade-offs. And that is why over eighty percent of the school systems in Georgia are looking to opt out. Think about that. Nearly every district is taking the same stance. It tells us that something is not right. It tells us that this amendment will not properly fund public education in our state. It tells us this is a flawed policy, and school boards must take action to protect the schools and our community. I personally stand for local control. The decisions about our schools should not be left to state representatives or senators who do not live in our community, who do not understand the unique needs of our students and community. Only Calwita County knows what is best for Calwita. We must have the flexibility to make financial decisions that balance the need for quality education with the responsibility of keeping property taxes manageable. At the end of the day, this is about fairness, responsibility, and protecting our future. We must ensure that schools have the funding they need while also making sure that families are not overburdened with ever-increasing taxes. And the best way to keep those, to keep that, is to make those decisions at the local level, where we, the people of Calwita, have a say in our future. Thank you.
Ms. Burnett, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. I left the noon hearing today with a deep sense of sadness. I felt like I didn't recognize this community, the one I've spent my entire life in. I'm not sure how we got here, but what I've seen over these last several weeks in these hearings is not the Noonan and Calwita that I know. My community is comprised of people who help one another, who are kind and loving. I believe that that Calwita still exists, and I have faith that we, as a community, all want the same thing, to leave this place better than we found it. We can argue the semantics of House Bill five eighty-one, we can lay blame at the feet of others, but for me, the bottom line is that we, as a board, need to be responsive to our community. I believe we must address the increases in our budget, we must be willing to make adjustments, even if it means making hard decisions. I'm eager to address the concerns brought to us over these past few weeks while also protecting our funding source and maintaining local control of our system. We have to find the balance that can exist between the needs of the system and the burden on the taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a brief comment. So again, thank you all for being here tonight and for staying engaged in this process. Your involvement truly matters, and I appreciate everyone being plugged into these critical conversations. I'm personally voting to opt out of House Bill five eighty-one because, in my judgment, it is fundamentally flawed. I know I represent District Five, but I also represent a twenty-three thousand person student constituency who do not have the ability to vote. These students rely on us, this board, to make decisions that prioritize their well-being and educational outcomes. And I, I will speak for the rest of the board here, we take that responsibility very seriously. The decisions I make are grounded in what will serve their best interest. That's my top priority. Following that, I must also consider the needs of our staff, who are essential to the success of our schools, and then, of course, the needs of the broader community. While I always strive to make the best decision for everyone involved, there are times when the needs of the community as a whole do not align with what is best for the students and staff. It is in these moments that I have to take a step back and think carefully about what is going to make, or excuse me, what is going to have the most positive, long-lasting impact on our students' future. Regrettably, House Bill five eighty-one, as it stands, doesn't adequately address those priorities. It doesn't meet the needs of those who matter the most in this situation, the students, who rely on us to provide them with the education and the support they need to succeed. Additionally, it's worth noting, because I know it's been brought up in some of the meetings, that our delegation voted unanimously on this, and I think that's great for them. But as you can see, this affects this board, our students, our staff, and this community greatly, and not at any point did the delegation reach out to any member of this board. This lack of communication is concerning, especially when it comes to decisions that affect our schools, not our schools, but our schools and our students. I want to remind everyone that we are not sitting in ivory towers, making decisions in isolation. We are just like many of you, not all of you, but many of you, who are taxpaying citizens, working hard every day to support and improve our communities. Our perspective comes from our shared responsibility to the families and children we serve. I understand that there are many perspectives on this issue, and I promise you, I respect the intent behind five eighty-one and all of your opinions. But after careful consideration, I believe it is in the best interest of our students and our schools to opt out. I'm committed to doing what is best for our district, our schools, and especially for our students. Thank you, seriously, all again, for your continued engagement and for being a part of the important process these last few weeks.
I also have a prepared statement that, I apologize for reading this, but I don't want to get off track. It has become clear to me, and clear to most of the school systems around the state, that this measure would defund public schools over time. It creates local governments the same, but does not acknowledge that school systems, per state law, have very different responsibilities and different physical realities than city and county governments do. All of us on this board are homeowners and have the same concerns about inflation and rise in property values. But if our school, school board were to opt in, it seems clear that five eighty-one could diminish our ability to provide good, quality schools and hurt students cumulatively over time. It would reduce our ability to govern locally. It would eliminate flexibility to offer things like senior tax exemptions, not legally, but financially. It wouldn't affect current exemptions, but it would take off the table financially any possibility of raising them in the future. I think the board would like to propose an alternative that would offer help to homeowners, senior citizens, and students, everyone involved, all the stakeholders of the Calwita County community and the Calwita County school system, in a way that would also be sustainable for our school system and our community, and would place us more on the same footing as city and county governments. Separate from our vote on House Bill five eighty-one tonight, I would like to ask the superintendent to work with the system attorney and our local legislative delegation to draft local legislation that would cap homestead property values and protect homeowners from big value increases each year, enhances senior tax exemptions in some way to increase the protections for senior citizens, and places us more on an equal playing field with cities and counties, and gives us local flexibility and allows us to protect what we have in place for our students and families. That resolution, of course, cannot be voted on tonight, but following our vote on House Bill five eighty-one, I'd like to see us consider that kind of plan as soon as possible.
When will we plan to discuss that plan? I mean, I think it's important for our seniors to have that exemption, so how soon can we do that?
I think from, I'll pass to Dr. Horton, but from what I understand, he will get with the, the board attorney, maybe even this evening, certainly tomorrow, and, and start working with the local delegation immediately, and maybe as early as by the end of the week, we could have something together. I, it depends on, I don't want to speak for some others because they've got some work to do, and we've got some discussion to have on that topic. Dr. Horton, do you like to add what you can, you know, the process there?
One second. Mr. Glover, I believe, I mean, we can, we can pass whatever legislation we want, I mean, and then we send it to the delegation, and so...
That is correct.
Yeah, so my, I mean, we can try to talk to the delegation all we want, but I think if we pass something, I think it is up to them whether they carry it or not.
Yeah, that is true. That is, that is correct. You are correct, Mr. Copeland, so.
I do think we have to try.
I agree, okay. Any further discussion before we take the vote? We do have a, we have a motion and a second?
Hold on one second.
Oh, you had, okay, I ask you and then I skip over you, sorry.
Just to be clear, I want to be, be, I want to be a hundred percent clear on the directive. You're, you're directing me to get with the board attorney and staff...
Yes, sir.
...to write a resolution for local legislation...
Yes, sir.
...that will cap the percentage of reassessments on residential homesteaded properties, enhance senior exemptions...
Yes, sir.
...and provide local flexibility for the board, and we can get, or for, for the board financially, so we can get together on those details, and then let me get with the board attorney, and then as soon as, as soon as possible, I'll get something back to you.
That is correct, and to make sure I understand, and everyone here and online understands, once we pass the, the resolution, it goes to the local delegation, they take it to the Senate and the House, and once the governor signs, then it would be, come back to the voters in a local referendum, probably in November, is that correct? Not our decision of which election it's on, but it would come back to the voters to approve.
If we can get it in before signed on day?
Yes, yes.
I'll get to work.
Okay, okay. We do have a motion and a second on opting out of House Bill five eighty-one. All those in favor? The motion passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is...
Two more.
Continuing on with Action, Action Item One, Group One.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, the next item I have for you in Group One is to approve a request from Noonan High School for the purchase and installation of a scorer's booth for the baseball field. Noonan High School requests approval for the purchase of materials and installation for a new scorer's booth for the baseball field. The equipment, materials, and installation for the scorer's booth will be funded by the Noonan High School Baseball Booster Club. Calwita County School System Maintenance will provide electrical service to the new location. Total project cost for materials and labor is eleven thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-five cents, and requirements of board policy F E A E have been met. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Okay, the superintendent has recommended approval for the request for Noonan High Baseball Booster Club to, for the purchase of materials and installation of a scorer's booth at the baseball field. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton?
Mr. Chair, the last item I have for you in Group One is to approve the F Y twenty twenty-six RISA membership agreement. Calwita County School System partners with West Georgia RISA for educational services for improvement of instruction. This contract is for F Y twenty twenty-six between West Georgia RISA and the Calwita County School System, the amount of eighty thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval of the F Y twenty-six RISA membership agreement for the total cost of eighty thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, Action Items, Group Two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only action item we have in Group Two tonight is to approve, request approval for the proposal submitted by C G S Waterproofing L L C for replacing the roof on the kitchen at Arnold Middle School. C G S submitted the high-scoring proposal with a total score of eighty-nine point seven points and a total bid of a hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. The proposal, scoring sheet, and bid tabulation are attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval. Just one note, we've had a leaky roof over there for some time, it's worsened over the last few months, and it's just at the point where we need to get that taken care of, so I recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval of proposal for re-roofing the kitchen at Arnold Middle School for a total cost of one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Do I have... Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, Action Items, Group 3, Trips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mark Guy to bring you two trips tonight. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal of East Coeida High School requests permission for the rifle team to participate in the Marine Corps JROTC Air Rifle Championships in Anniston, Alabama on Wednesday, February 12th through Saturday, February 15th, 2025. Students will miss two days of school, but there is no cost to the school system. The German-American Partnership Program and the Halle Foundation are requesting an opportunity for Coeida STEM, that's science, technology, engineering, and math students, to become a part of a two-year exchange program with students connected to the University of Segen in Segen, Germany. Coeida students would travel to Germany during two weeks in June of 2025, as well as two weeks in June of 2026. The goal is to assist Coeida students in the STEM pathways to learn more about programs such as apprenticeship that Coeida has already begun. The goal is also to have Coeida and German students work collaboratively on a STEM project during the two-year program. Costs to the students have been minimized by a grant provided by the Halle Foundation. There is no cost to our school system, and no instructional days will be missed.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Thank you. Let's take these independently, since they are so different and different trips. First of all, do I have a motion to approve the East Coeida High School Field Trip for the rifle team for a trip starting tomorrow?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I will add, good luck. You're going tomorrow. All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Next is a German Exchange Program Field Trip for Coeida STEM students for two trips to Germany. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to just take for a moment to thank Dr. Puckett. I know, as a former grant writer and a writer, how hard it is to get that funding, and thank you for minimizing that cost to our students. I think that is exceptional, and I know how difficult those can be and how scrutinizing they can be. So thank you for getting that money for the students.
Thank you, Ms. Dees. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, Superintendent's Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent Mr. Keith Chapman. He's going to bring you budget reports, sales, tax, and then we'll have our audit report.
Good evening. Financially, we've completed 58.33% of the year. We've expended 57.21% of the budget. We continue to stay in good shape there. Sales tax collections were just over $4 million. This had the Christmas holidays in it, so the second-largest receipt we've ever had. I'd like to introduce Hope Pendegras. She's a partner with Malden and Jenkins, our independent auditors.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you all tonight. The audit and what we call our auditor's discussion and analysis is attached to the agenda items. I wanted to, first of all, introduce Malden and Jenkins to you. For those of you who may not be aware, we are what we consider to be a large Southeast regional firm. We started in Georgia and primarily operate in Georgia, but we also operate in six other states. We audit approximately 725 governments throughout the Southeast, and that includes over 80 school systems and 40 charter schools, primarily again in Georgia. I spend 100% of my time auditing governments, and I would say at least 80% of that is auditing school districts like yourself. I'm not going to go over the audit in detail. I just wanted to give you some highlights, and then I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. So for the fiscal year ended 6/30/24, you all received what's called a clean or an unmodified opinion. We opine on whether or not your financial statements are materially correct, and we use a risk-based approach in order to do so. Your general fund fund balance was approximately $54.3 million, and that was a very liquid amount because you had cash and investments in excess of $70 million. So a lot of times, people think fund balance is cash, but it's not necessarily always the case. But for you all, you were very liquid at that time. You added about $4.5 million to your fund balance, which was a little more than what you had anticipated. You are budgeted to spend, to add about $2.2 million to your fund balance, but in the end, you're only carrying about 8.7 weeks. If you incurred your expenditures evenly across all the weeks, you only have about eight and a half weeks of reserves. So you're still operating at a pretty skinny level as far as your reserves. In addition to the financial statement audit that we do, we also do a compliance audit. You all received approximately $31.6 million in federal dollars. We are not required to look at all of it. Again, we follow a risk-based approach. So this year, we looked at two programs. One of those was your special education funds, and the other was your disaster assistance funds that you received in regard to Noonan High School and, I think, another elementary school. So that was about $6.65 million or a little over 21%. We also issued an opinion on your compliance with federal expenditures, and that was clean as well. So all good things to report, and at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So you didn't find any fraud?
Well, an audit is not designed to find any fraud, but we, there was no fraud that came to our attention.
Thank you.
Hope, maybe a bit of an unfair question. The level of detail, can you describe in any form the level of detail that goes into an audit like this? And I guess the reason I'm going there is oftentimes I'll have people say, ah, you know, you, they don't really look at it. This group's just signing off on your audit. Can you, can you give a description of how long you guys are here in the field, what that looks like, and the type of work that you're doing?
So I kind of talked a little bit about the experience that we bring to the table in the beginning, but we send experienced staff people here. We're usually on-site for about two weeks. This year, I also had a remote employee working as well. And then after we wrap up the audit, we go back to our offices. I have someone who has over 10 years of experience, again, auditing school districts. She did her initial review. It then passes to me. I do an additional review of everything that we've looked at, and I also pass it on to what we called an engagement quality control reviewer. He or she doesn't have any, she has not been associated with your engagement at all for that year, and so she kind of comes in as a cold reviewer and does a review as well. As far as some of the procedures that we do, we confirm your cash balances with your banks, so we do what's called a positive confirmation. We send them a list of accounts, and they send back to us the balances, and we confirm that against what you, your finance team has recorded. We also do that with your investments in the local government investment pool, or Georgia Fund 1. We confirm the amount of delinquent taxes that are owed to you by sending a confirmation request to your tax commissioner. They also provide us with a listing of all the payments that they've made to you all, and we also do some cutoff testing. We look and see what they paid after year-end to kind of test that delinquent balance. We confirm your SPOS with the Department of Revenue. We confirm your QBE funding with the Georgia Department of Education. And when I say confirm, that means we go to that independent source, not anybody at the school district, and we say, how much did you send to Coeida County? And we compare that to what your finance team has recorded, and we find that to be materially correct and in agreement. We obtain a listing of all your grant payments. We reconcile that to your general ledger. We also test your capital asset additions by looking at invoices and making sure that anything that's recorded as an addition is tested. We also look for the additions that might not be recorded by looking at your repairs and maintenance and your capital asset expenditures. We do a cutoff testing of liabilities, which means we look at checks that you wrote after year-end, see if there's anything that related to, in this case, fiscal year '24, but was not recorded. We found nothing in that case. As far as your pension and state health OPEB liabilities, we confirm those amounts with the independent auditors that audit those plans. We do a review of your minutes to see if there are any transactions that affect the financials, that we need to make sure that those transactions have been recorded. And we also send a letter, excuse me, we also sent a letter to your attorney to ask them if there are any contingent liabilities that need to be recorded. So does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. Thank you. I do, I do have one more item. If nobody else has anything on the audit, I need to bring one more thing to Ms. Pendegras' attention.
Mr. Superintendent, just on the audit and those people here that worked on it, I just want to come in, Mr. Keith Chapman, Mr. Chris Latimer, and all those other people that work with them, of not just the work that you put in to support the audit, but the work that you do year-round to ensure that we have these clean audits. It's greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. My folks fight to come to Coeida County.
Good.
Hope I do have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
And you may or may not be able to help with this, so I'll start by prefacing. If you need to send this on to someone else or another entity, please do so.
Okay.
I want to address one more item that falls under our audit based on an allegation that was made during this afternoon's public hearing related to Thomas Crossroads Elementary and the former principal there. During this afternoon's hearing, an individual publicly intimated that there may be fraud at Thomas Crossroads Elementary due to a recent incident involving the former principal that occurred outside of school. Since this allegation was made publicly, I feel the need to respond to it publicly. Board Policy DIE states that upon receiving a report of fraud, quote, "The superintendent, or his or her designee, shall conduct or cause to be conducted an investigation of employees, providers, contractors, or vendors as necessary and appropriate." Therefore, I'm requesting that Malden and Jenkins either investigate this allegation or that they hire a separate firm to investigate whether or not any fraud has occurred at Thomas Crossroads Elementary School. Please go back as far as you need to go, and I look forward to hearing your public report when you or your designee have completed your investigation. I'm also directing Mr. Latimer, Mr. Chapman, school-based staff, and our financial staff to provide you or your designee with any information you need to fully investigate this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We can handle it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Mr. Superintendent, I believe we're on to the administration.
At this time, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mark Guy once again. He'll bring you staff and student attendance and your board goal report. Dr. Guy?
Thank you once again, Dr. Horton. For the fifth attendance reporting period, the highest staff attendance was White Oak Elementary School. Highest student attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. Highest elementary student attendance was Thomas Crossroads Elementary School. Highest middle school student attendance goes to Blake Bass Middle School. And the highest high school student attendance, Noonan High School, home of the Cougars. For our board goal report, I just want to do a reminder for you all, board members, the whole board training will take place next month at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, for you here at the Wirth Central Office. The focus of this year's whole board training will be preparation for the Cognia accreditation visit and a deep dive into the school system budgetary process.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. Board members, last item I have for you tonight is the facilities and construction report. You can see Noonan High School still hanging there, still working on some, some work on the cast stone panels, some door modifications, and we're still working through some HVAC issues, which is, which is no surprise on a project of that, of that size. North Gate High School tennis courts, we've found some subgrade issues there. Work scheduled to begin on those in May. Central Educational Center, Southern A&amp;E is working on preliminary design drawings for this project. Hope to have those final plans completed and approved by the DOE in May, and then work would begin in late summer of 2025. Mentioned that Arnold Kitchen re-roof, you approved tonight, so we'll get rolling on that as quick as we can. Also in your report, shield projects, be the final phase of our shield projects. Would get the last of our middle schools in. We'll receive those bids. Mr. Keith and his staff will receive those bids on February 27th and hope to get those projects done for you this summer. Also, doing some sewer work at Aronco-Sargent East Side. They'll take those bids on March 6th and hope to bring those to you for approval so we can get those completed this summer. Still a note there on the turf fields, renovations at Noonan High and East Coeida High being rescheduled for later this year. We just couldn't get to those with the weather prior to the start of soccer and lacrosse, and we certainly don't want to jeopardize the start of soccer and lacrosse. So hopefully, hopefully this summer, we'll be able to get to those. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. At this time, we set aside 45 minutes of each meeting for public comments. Tonight, we have one speaker signed up, Max Ruth. As you're coming forward with only one speaker, I'm not going to read the whole list of rules that you signed when you signed up to speak, but just very quickly. You'll be limited to five minutes. Only citizens of Coeida County or employees of the school system may speak. No grievances may be heard concerning any specific personnel action, no personal attacks. And after you speak, each board member will have up to one minute to, to respond if they so choose, so.
Sounds good. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. Yes, sir.
Ms. Dees, I liked your reference to the Hatfield and McCoy situation once upon a time. My name is Max Ruth. I'm a proud parent of a special-needs kindergartner named Jace. Here's some things to know about Jace. He has got the most infectious laugh, which will brighten anybody's day unless you're home alone. Then it's terrifying if you hear that little laugh. Otherwise, he's amazing. He's got the deepest little blue eyes, and he's autistic, so he doesn't do much eye contact, but when he does, he can see directly into your soul. I mean, right through you. It is, it's almost unsettling if you didn't know how good intention he is. But he loves Play-Doh, splash pads in the Noonan Utility Park, and marshmallows. He is still also autistic, and he doesn't communicate traditionally. He's got a speech device that he uses that helps him request things, and it makes everybody's life, especially his, a lot easier. He's got a ton of personalities as well in his little body, and it's amazing how much personality and attitude somebody can have without being able to expel any words at all. I mean, it's, it does deserve an award, what he is able to accomplish with just a simple look. But I go into detail about all this to illustrate the fact that Jace is a person. He's a very real little human being. I know for some government departments out there, some people that scan through things, he is somebody who's related to an expenditure, a line item or a student ID. But I say all this to really emphasize that he's a person that we've got so much hope for a bright future. Good news is, is, you know, I come here today with a request and not any sort of admonishment or general upset. You know, I mean, I feel like I'm in good standing to everybody, so I'm looking forward to keeping that going. But he's in a special class for children, specifically with autism at Thomas Crossroads. It's phenomenal. It truly is. It has exceeded our expectations by a good bit. Now granted, our expectations weren't that large, just to be totally fair. I understand that there is always going to be some level of limit to any sort of school system that it can provide help-wise, but his teacher, the pair of pros, various aides, the specialists who come and work with him, amazing. Now, what I understand too about that classroom is a lot of special education funding comes from the federal government, as was talked about earlier with the woman from Malden and Jenkins. You know, I know that Department of Education right now is in the crosshairs, whether it be dismantled, gutted in some form or fashion, you know, any of the 34 little elements of it, if it gets just dispersed elsewhere or shut down entirely. As parents, we're scared, because we, we look at that as the lifeline for Jace, and what we have to put some trust in is that if a block funding grant is given to each state, that students like Jace aren't forgotten because between Title IX funding and IDEA grant funding, which is, you know, of course, responsible for holding states to a certain expectation that the money is used a particular way for special-needs students like him. Without that, I lose my high hopes that he is going to be, continued to be seen and taken care of in the same capacity that he is now. So I understand, I'm living in a world of hypotheticals right now of... So, I understand I'm living in a world of hypotheticals right now of if this happens, what happens next? And that, you know, as a special needs parent, we have to have a contingency plan in place at all times. If we're going to the grocery store, it's in my best interest especially to make sure Jace has a fun little drink that he can be there in the cart with and be just hanging out. Um, you know, and then I have to think about too, okay, if he can't handle it, we're just gonna have to go. Instacart, you've got my business. So when we look towards the future, the contingency plans that are part of our everyday life, we look at as a lifeline for his future. So, what I would like to do is to leave tonight with confidence and assurance that students like Jace, and he's one of many, won't be forgotten if the DOE gets dismantled, if funding turns into a block grant, that he is continued to be seen as a person in the future and not just a student in a classroom that frankly probably costs a ton of money. There's four students in there. There's a bunch of professionals that work with them. I can imagine the cost is nuts. For us, it's entirely worth it, and I hope that for everybody else here, it can be seen as something that is entirely worth it. And that's all I got for you guys.
Thank you. Dr. Horton, do you have any, any insight to as to where we're at? I don't know that any of us do, but, you know.
Well, I, I really don't have, um, a whole lot of insight with the what-ifs and what will happen. Um, what I will, what I will say to you is this. Um, we've already had conversations about the what-ifs at the district level, um, and it's my job to make sure that none of our students become a number. So I'll do everything that I can, um, to make sure that, that we do all that we can to give him the best that we can. Um, I know that may not a hundred percent reassure you, 'cause I don't know the answers to all the questions, uh, but just, just know that we're gonna do the best we can, no matter what the circumstances are. I want you to know that. And I'll be happy if you wanna, if you wanna give me a call or get Mr. Jackson, give him your number. Um, we can, we can talk offline. Uh, any questions I can answer, I'll be happy to answer. Um, I promise.
Can I chime in with something very quickly?
Yeah.
Uh, the, the reassurance that you guys have talked about it and there's no guarantee behind it, uh, is actually the most reassuring part, 'cause if you said, oh, I guarantee he's gonna be taken care, we're all good. I say, mm, we don't know that, Mr. Horton. Um, so I appreciate the honesty and transparency behind that.
I, I don't know. There's a lot floating out there. Um, we'll, we'll deal with facts whenever they become, you know, reality, and we'll go from there, but I'll, I'll, you make sure you know we'll do the best we can.
Most of us here on the, on the board are parents, so we certainly share your, your concern, and, uh, some grandparents too, so.
Me, I just had my first grandbaby. He's four months old.
Congratulations.
Are there any, any other, any other board comments to, Mr. Ruth?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're on to the point of, of general board comments. Does anyone have any final, any other comments, any other topics they wish to discuss?
I've got a couple of comments. I probably should've made them in the earlier portion of the meeting, but I'll go ahead and do it now. During these past five House Bill 581 hearings, uh, Dr. Horton, Horton has received a terrible bashing from certain speakers. It was uncalled for, but it was to be expected by a couple of these people. It's very hard to find a superintendent that's highly qualified, that also wants the job, and then if they get the job, can do a great job being a superintendent. And Dr. Horton fix all, checks all three of those boxes. We're lucky we had him to lead us through the pandemic, which was probably the hardest time to do school of any time in our lifetime, and he also led us through the tornado situation in Noonan High and the rebuild, and many other things. He doesn't have a nine-to-five, Monday-through-Friday job either. And for people to disparage him because of the salary he makes, we, the board approved his salary, so if you got a problem with his salary, leave him alone. You can talk to the seven of us if you need to. Uh, he's got the toughest job in Coweta County. I just wanna say I appreciate you and sorry you had to go through some of that. On another note, personally, I can personally handle most of the ugly, erroneous, and harmful comments, for the most part directed at the board in general or me specifically. However, the ones I had a real issue with is the ones that implied that anyone voting to opt out would be answering to God. Jesus Christ is my Lord and Savior, and I don't need anyone teaching me a Bible lesson or assuming they know God's plan for me. I have been and always will try to be as fair as possible to the taxpayer and fund the Coweta County School System properly at the same time. Making the system work financially takes the entire community, not just those that believe in the system or want to support it. I believe in public education, the Coweta County School System, and I, I will always go to bat for both.
Any other comments? That's it. Any comments on this side? Okay, with that, I just wanna thank everyone for being here tonight. I appreciate you coming out. Those of you watching online, uh, appreciate you doing that. You can always come join us in person. And with that, I have a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.